And it is now 7:00 PM and we will call to order this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board. As is our custom, we will begin with a moment of silent reflection. Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Jeros.
Here.
Mr. Kroner.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall.
Here.
Mrs. Weber.
Here.
Mrs. Fee.
Here. We begin tonight's meeting with the oath of office for board members who are recently elected. I, as President, will administer the oath of office for the newly-elected school board members. Would the four members recently elected please stand? Please raise your right hand. I would ask that you begin the oath together with "I," followed by stating your name, and I think we'll begin at my left with Mrs. Muehlfeld. Then continue the oath together. I.
Sharon Muehlfeld.
Mary Jo Randall.
Thomas Joseph Jeros.
Lois Weber.
Who have been elected.
Who have been elected.
Elected to the Board of Education.
The Board of Education of the Wauwatosa School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability so help me God.
Please sign the forms in front of you and I will sign as witness. A copy will be sent to you. Thank you and welcome to your new term on the Board. We begin our meetings with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly-scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised; however, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If anyone has a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please approach the microphone and state your name and address prior to making your comment. Seeing none, we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve this consent agenda? Move to approve. Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Jeros.
Aye.
Mr. Kroner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
That brings us to recognitions. Mr. Kroner, would you begin?
Thank you. West High School honors eighty-three student achievers at the twentieth annual Achievers' Breakfast on April fourteenth. The event salutes those students who have shown marked improvement during their school career and honors them, not for what they have achieved, but rather how they have achieved it. Students received commemorative programs and pins along with certificates of achievement. Freshman recipients are Miriam Ashrock, Matthew Barrett, Michael Bates, Sharia Brown, Chance Boobles, Lauren Burke, Jack Coleman, Alan Finn, Philip Fossil, Molly Grenier, Adam Harvey, Amber Held, Tori Callis, Ricky Landers, Claire Langin, Nicholas Maroder, Crystal Napoleon, Samantha Pogzaline, Connor Ryder, and Nathaniel Wade. Sophomore first-year recipients are Austin Budge, Samantha Booksa, Patrick Campbell, Jennifer Flynn, Joshua Fober, Jenna Julian, Andrea Kopack, Jared Kraus, Navee Love, Adriana Luna Garzinski, Valerie Martin, Tyler McDonald, Nazar Mohammed, Daniel O'Brien, Elizabeth Retsch, Caleb Salem, Paul Schmidt, Colleen Seefelt, Lee Silverstein, Alexander Sakupczak, David Wakeland, Corey Wilberth, and Russell Woods. Sophomore second-year recipients are Brittany Rodriguez and Andrew Thompson. Junior first-year recipients are Lauren Adams, Thomas Blake, Aaron Coleman, Miracle Douglas, Benjamin Freiberg, Lauren Itzen, Eric Looker, Shannon Maney, Ian McNeil, Kalen Merton, Anastasia Nicholas, Kadeja Redd, Kazua Tao, Lerdis Tomlin, Andre Torres, and Erin Walcheck. The junior second-year recipients are Laquan Connor, Jesse Hurley, and Edgar Terran. Senior first-year recipients are Tyler Brown, Erica Gonzalez, Ahmed Hassan, Amari Holloman, Darian Jefferson, John Maria, Tomika Meadows, Daniel Morin, Roman Palmer, Alisa Perkins, Zachary Pogzaline, Mark Reynolds, Allison Souter, and Benjamin Schwab. Senior second-year recipients are Benjamin Baldwin, Eric Larkin, and Jordan Wagner. Senior third-year recipients are Nathan Albert and Philmar Williams.
Seven members of the Wauwatosa East High School Chapter of Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, have qualified for the FBLA National Competition in June. Seniors Chris Do, Eric Islow, Eric Pintar finished in first place in Network Design. Juniors Matt Schmidt, John Strobusch, and Briar Kratzler finished in second place in Management Info Systems. And senior Olivia Rebholz finished in first place in Business Communications at the Wisconsin State Leadership Conference Competition, which was held April eleven and twelve. The first and second-place finishers qualified them for the FBLA National Competition in Orlando, Florida in June. Twenty-two members of the East FBLA Chapter took part in the state competition. Other members of the chapter that placed in the state competition were freshman Jared George and Jake Peterson, fifth place; digital video editing juniors Samantha Stone, eighth place; public speaking, M juniors Jake Robarge, Zach Peterson, and Patrick Nellen, third place; banking and financial business, excuse me, financial systems. Excuse me. FBLA is the national organization for all secondary school students participating in business education programs. It functions as an integral part of the instructional program of the business educational curriculum in secondary schools.
Students from East and West High Schools recently completed the 2010-2011 National Latin Exam sponsored by the National Junior Classical League, NGCL, and the Wisconsin Junior Classical League, WJCL. More than one-hundred-and-fifty thousand students participated in the National Latin Exam from all fifty states and other countries. From East High School, Jared George and Charles Gagny won Silver Maximum Cum Laude Awards. And Matthew Z. Kelly won a Cum Laude Certificate. Veronica Thornton from West High School won a Cum Laude Certificate. Both East and West High Schools are now members of the NJCL and the WJCL. Latin teachers' goals are to take both high schools in the next year's state convention competition and in the future to the National Conference Competition. The National Junior Classical League is an organization of middle and high school students sponsored by the American Classical League. It is composed of local and state chapters and is the largest classical organization in the world today. Its purpose is to encourage an interest in and appreciation of the language, literature, and culture of ancient Greece and Rome. Neil A. Schaefer is the Latin teacher at East and West High Schools.
Students from Longfellow Middle School and Lincoln Elementary School recently turned in outstanding performances at the State Future Problem Solving, FPS, competition. The competition was held in Green Lake on April sixteenth. Students from across the state participated in competitive and non-competitive FPS teams, community problem solving, and scenario writing. Two students from Longfellow Middle School and five students from Lincoln Elementary took part in the state competition. The students used research and creativity to solve futuristic scenarios using twenty-first century skills. The students were coached by Lincoln Elementary fifth-grade teacher Dr. Renee McCudden with support from Lincoln and Madison Elementary District Team Leader Lisa O'Malley. The Lincoln Elementary fifth-grade team of Ian Schmidt Ernst, Jacob Zinkada, Matt Doberstein, Brody Spohler, and Jamie Squire captured first-place honors for competition banner. There were approximately thirty banners from around the state representing a variety of schools and districts. Longfellow Middle School's sixth-grader Abby Gifford competed as an individual in her division. Janet Fee, a sixth-grader at Longfellow Middle School, finished in fourth place in the individual portion of her division. Founded by creativity professor Dr. E. Paul Torrance, professor emeritus at the University of Georgia, FPS stimulates critical and creative thinking skills and encourages students to develop a vision for the future.
The Wauwatosa East High School Destination Imagination Team has advanced to the global competition, which will be held May twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth in Knoxville, Tennessee. The East High School team of Maggie Elliott, Casey Stokes, Sam Elliott, Evan Patton, Catherine Hughes, and Wes Sabrowski advanced to the global competition with a second-place finish at the state competition. East High School advanced to the state competition by finishing second in the Versus Foiled Again Challenge. Teams from Longfellow Middle School and Wilson Elementary, Wauwatosa STEM, also had teams competing at the state competition. Both teams competed in the Mythology Mission Challenge. Every year, Destination Imagination reaches one-hundred-thousand students across the U.S. and in more than thirty countries. Destination Imagination is an exhilarating after-school activity in which students work in teams to solve mind-bending challenges and present their solutions at tournaments.
The Wauwatosa Education Association, WEA, has announced the recipients of the 2011 Friends of Education Awards. Each school in the district nominates a person that has been a friend to that school. The recipients from around the school district are honored for their contribution to the education of students in the Wauwatosa School District. The 2011 Friends of Education recipients are Anne Van Dusen, East High School; Thomas Fitzpatrick and Lindsay Draper, West High School; Judy Doyle, Longfellow Middle School; Milliman Incorporated, or Dave Ogden, the Whitman Middle School; Mark Wendlent, Eisenhower Elementary; Jim Repetti, Jefferson Elementary; Jennifer Peenick, Lincoln Elementary; Linda Carlson, Madison Elementary; Mary Volchensik, McKinley Elementary; Teresa Hub, Roosevelt Elementary; Jeff and Beth Steuber, Underwood Elementary; Tony Carter, Washington Elementary; Anne Cowling, Wilson Elementary; Kristi Casey, Wauwatosa STEM; Phyllis Bonacorso Detention Center; Cheryl Schneering, Tosa School of the Trades. This year's recipients were honored during ceremonies held on April nineteenth.
Thank you, board members. Great job with the names. Congratulations to all of the students and staff members mentioned. Good luck to those of you who are continuing on in your competitions, and thank you to each of the Friends of Education. Our next item on the agenda is reports to the Board, and we begin with student learning. Mrs. Ehrenberger and I believe others here will be presenting an AP World Language proposal.
I am going to just, joining me in the audience this evening is Eva Toonstra and Karen Ave, who are our German instructors at East and West High School. We have Neil Schaefer, who we earlier saw some of the work that he's been doing this year with our Latin program. We also have Colleen Dartes and Matt Keefe from our Spanish program, and Fiona Rowe from French with us this evening. I'm going to do the presentation, and then if we have some questions that they can assist with, they're here to participate. So, just as a reminder, we last year did an adoption for levels one through four of world language in French, German, Latin, and Spanish. We left open levels five and six because we wanted a year to do some further exploration to see about the possibility of transitioning levels five and six to an Advanced Placement program. So, our teachers have been working this year on that exploration, and tonight, the culmination of that is what kinds of resources we'd like for the Board to approve so that we could make the transition to Advanced Placement. So, to begin, whoops, sorry, to begin, we just want to remind that the world language audit that was conducted last year was a result of the Long Range Plan, the K-12 World Language Initiative. Also, our district goals are aligned, as this proposal tonight involves us asking for resources to support an Advanced Placement course, which is expansion of that program as part of a district goal. And also, this came out of the curriculum audit and curriculum review that took place last year. So, that brings us to, the World Language Department also has goals that have been developed as part of their review process. The AP program will strengthen student language proficiency through the use of authentic materials and integrated skills. It will better prepare students to succeed in our twenty-first-century global society, and it gives students greater options upon entering college. So, what is the difference between the Level Five and Six program and the AP program that we're proposing? Our current program has always prepared students well for university placement exams, and we have much evidence of students that have received a lot of credits as a result of participating in our Level Five and Six program. What the AP courses will do is it will continue with that same preparation, but it will also allow students to take Advanced Placement examinations, which they can also, if they receive scores of three or higher, for colleges that participate in that program, be able to receive some college credit. The AP program helps students to become more proficient. It emphasizes integrated skills and authentic resources. It works on increasing the overall proficiency in the language, and it does test what they know and can do. And the College Board, which is, who sponsors the Advanced Placement courses, also provides feedback to teachers on how to improve the program each year based on student performance. So, it's a program that can have continuous improvement. Our program would be a two-year program, so they would participate in AP both what would be like the Level Five and the Level Six year, so it'd be a two-year preparation. They would begin, next year would be the first year where we would have the true Advanced Placement curriculum being delivered. So, the 2011-12 school year would be like a pre-AP, the Level Five, where students could start the two-year intense preparation, and then the following year would be, those students would go on to Level Six and be our first graduating class that has had the two-year preparation for AP. The AP curriculum audit has to be conducted in order for us to utilize an AP designation. So, this will get us, give us a chance to get that completed by January of 2012, and then we'll be able to use AP labels and apply them the 12-13 school year. I will also say here that we would still encourage students, even though they haven't had the two-year preparation, any students wishing to take the Advanced Placement test can do so at any time, and teachers would be encouraging them, even though they haven't had the actual two-year preparation program that we're, that we are developing to begin next year. This is part of the AP program. There are, these are the themes that are covered. They've done, recently, they've redone Spanish, I believe, French, German, and Latin's not up for review for another year. But this is, these are the AP themes that are central to those revisions by the College Board: Global Challenges, Science and Technology, Contemporary Life, Personal and Public Identities, Families and Communities, and Beauty and Aesthetics. With AP revising these particular College Board curriculums, they have aligned with national standards. They have focus on foreign language learning in the twenty-first century, which we learned about at the last board meeting. They focus on communication, encourage cultural awareness. They incorporate the thematic approach, provide clear learning objectives, and achievement level descriptions, which are part of our ability to be able to evaluate the program and its effectiveness. So, what we're asking for tonight, or what we're proposing tonight, are resources to support our transition from a Level Five and Six program to a Level Five AP and a Level Six AP. So, our French resources, which I'm not going to pretend to pronounce all these names, but these are the French proposals, which are related to having a core text, which is the first, the Holt McDougal recommendation there, is the core text that's being proposed. Also, having some materials for preparing for the AP exam, doing, having a workbook, and then some literature that is also commonly used in Advanced Placement course preparation. So, that's what you're, why you're seeing several things here, because these are proposed pieces of literature. I'll talk a little bit more about some of the dates we see on literature, as that was part of our Curriculum Council feedback. AP Spanish resources that we're proposing are, again, a textbook, like a core text that is a grammar resource and some test preparation as well. And you can also see the overall cost there is an estimate, but those are from quotes of, from the company, based on some numbers that we think are a little bit on the higher end. We know for our Spanish, we'll see some of the enrollment numbers here at the end, but, you know, we think we're going to come in in a range here. I'll give you a total of about what it'll be. The German resources, text and a workbook, and I think, is this a vocabulary resource, Eva?
Yeah.
Literature, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And for AP Latin, we, they are going to be, that program is going under review by the College Board. We also don't have students ready to go through that part of the program, but we've been working with Mr. Schaefer as well. He's been part of this. We anticipate that with his hard work and efforts, that we'll have enrollment to be able to offer a AP Latin course. Hopefully, the new stuff coming out from the College Board is the 12-13 school year. So, there's no point in us making any resource proposals at this time, because we don't have enrollment for that, and we know the new revisions coming out. So, we're hoping that in another year, we can look at some Latin AP resources, because we'll have that program developed well enough to be able to offer it to students. The implementation plan for AP, it's very, it's pretty prescriptive, but we have to develop a syllabi for each of these courses. It has to be approved by the College Board. We have to do some summer work in our curriculum, which includes some workshops that are sponsored by the College Board. I believe that the workshops that the teachers are looking at are offered in Illinois this summer, I think at Northwestern University. We have to submit the materials for the AP course audit by January thirty-first. After the completion of the two-year cycle, we'll have our first data to be able to evaluate how our program is and make some adjustments, and then to continue any training, collaboration, or evaluation. It will be ongoing, because we'll have data each year then, to determine the effectiveness of what our Advanced Placement program is producing. We went to the Curriculum Council back in February, so it's been a while before we came here. We had a couple of things we needed to do before we came. Curriculum Council, this is some of the feedback that they had given at that time. I'm going to kind of skip around here for a minute, but they, they had emphasized current resources. We had some discussion about some of the literature. We're going to see some older dates on it, because they're pieces of literature, so they're not going to have new publication dates. But they are literature that the Advanced Placement program highly recommends and are part of the Advanced Placement preparation. So, we're not adopting old materials. We're using pieces of literature or plays that have been central and key to students performing well on the assessment. So, it's using for practice with some of the communication and interpretation skills. So, we had that, so there was some discussion about that. As a result of that discussion, though, our French teachers also did look at, to see if there were any other texts that were coming out, and we actually know that there's a text coming out like in May, that the new edition is a 2012. So, we'll be able to get the latest edition by waiting just a little bit longer. Also, the Curriculum Council wanted our Advanced Placement teachers to first have a chance to go. In March, we had German and French participation in Advanced Placement one-day workshops in Chicago, and they wanted a chance for teachers to be able to go to those workshops before coming to the Board. They thought it would give them an opportunity to review their choices for materials and solidify those, and I think that it really did do that. They came back with some new ideas. And then, they also wanted to know about the AP enrollment numbers in world languages, which I will give you here in a minute. We also had a discussion about the International Advanced Placement Diploma, a brief discussion. I'll share with you what that is. And then the Curriculum Council also had suggested, not as related to world language, but that we might want to consider, for all students, to have a chance to take a one, one credit of elective course, so that it would encourage students that might want to take a course of rigor, or might want to take an Advanced Placement course, and not be afraid to take that risk, because they'd be worried about a grade, so that maybe one credit of their electives could be a pass/fail choice, to encourage students to be able to enroll and participate in any course that they wanted, but they could certainly choose rigor. So, that was a recommendation that came out of them hearing some of our recent AP proposals. The enrollment, this is this year's enrollment versus next year's enrollment. You'll see that our French five totals are twenty-one to thirty-one for next year. French six is twenty-one to seventeen. German five is twenty-seven to fifteen. German six, fifteen to twenty. Spanish, one-hundred-and-thirty-four to one-hundred-and-thirty-six for Level Five, and Spanish six from eighty-seven to one-hundred-and-twenty-four. So, we have a total this year of students enrolled in our Level Five and Six is three-hundred-and-five students, and next year, we anticipate it'll be three-hundred-and-forty-three students total. And I also should say that the total dollar amount for our proposals on French, German, and Spanish, it comes in around sixty-three thousand with our higher student estimates. So, I'm going to guess that it's probably going to come in somewhere between, you know, like fifty-seven and sixty-three thousand, depending on how those numbers are adjusted based on enrollment. Some other, since we talked about the Advanced Placement International Diploma, I thought I would tell you what it is. This is not, this is a diploma that doesn't cost a district any money. It's a question of we promote it. Our school counselors could promote students getting this diploma. It's a very rigorous diploma to receive. A student has to have earned grades of three or higher on at least five Advanced Placement exams, and they have to come from the following areas. So, two of them have to be from two different languages. So, they could select one of the English Advanced Placement exams, or they could select, and/or they would select a world language. They also have to select an AP exam offering a global perspective, so there are social studies recommendations; one AP exam from the sciences or math; and one or two additional exams from any other content area except world language or English. And then, the final thing that they would have to do is they have to indicate on their AP exam that they would like to have their results sent to a university outside the United States. They just have to have the results sent there. And if they can complete these things, that the College Board will award them an Advanced Placement International Diploma. So, it's one of those things that, you know, could have some, might have some way of rewarding students that are doing some very rigorous things in our schools. And just finally, just as one final comment, there are over forty countries that recognize the College Board Advanced Placement Program. So, it's not just a national program, but it's also recognized internationally. So, this is just a list of some of the places that AP is recognized around the world. So, that concludes the presentation for this evening. Except for one other little note, EfW did also award a grant to our Spanish AP teachers. They applied to get some headset microphones, which will allow us to convert the computer lab to a language lab. And they were awarded that grant recently, so. In conclusion, they also were working on some other ways to help support their program.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Meyer?
I'm skeptical of the AP pass/fail option, so.
We're not proposing that tonight, so.
Okay, I understand. Just to provide early comment that if it comes to us, at least for my questions, I need to understand why. So anyway, but otherwise, I have no other questions.
Mrs. Randall?
About the 60,000 approximately, that does include staff development?
Yes, it does. No, it does not. I apologize. It does not include the, the workshops that they'll be attending. I think that's part of an additional expense that would be added. I think the workshops are $625 for teachers to go this summer plus some added expenses for mileage. So that will probably add at least maybe somewhere another $5,000.
Okay. There are, some of these, on the, on the information we got in our packets show staff development included. Is that coming from the publishers or is that coming in the way of support materials?
The, the most important training that they're going to be receiving is at the advanced placement workshops. The, the companies that do, that the textbooks are do, provide some training, but it's really the advanced placement workshop training that our, our teachers need to be able to effectively implement. AP suggests certain resources that are needed for the courses and you choose from a limited selection. So from that limited selection, they make choices, but the workshops are where the real learning takes place.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Kroner?
Hi, I have a few questions, but I want to make sure I understand the proposal first. So when students finish the first four years of foreign language, if this is approved as an AP course, will all students that want to continue then continue in the AP program?
So students that would go through four years of a language would, could take an AP test, but they wouldn't have adequate preparation, but you know, they, a student can take an AP test at any time, but they wouldn't have what we consider adequate preparation to do well on that test. So Levels 5 and 6 are actually advanced placement preparation.
But what we have as 5, 6 now would be converted to advanced placement.
Yes, yes, sorry.
And 5, 6 would no longer exist as it is.
That's correct.
So if they go on, they have to be in the AP course?
Yes.
So my question is, I assume that, is turning the 5, 6 courses into AP courses, is that increasing the rigor of those courses?
I, I think that some of the teachers may want to comment on that, but it's certainly, in many respects, I think, the whole intent of the advanced placement course is to increase rigor. So it's a different way of learning than our students have learned in Levels 5 and 6, but I think that that's why they're doing it for the two-year preparation, is to be able to add rigor in, but have two years in which to, to do that.
You bet you.
Yeah, I'd like to say, I'd like to say something to that too. And one of the things that we have discussed within the World Language Department in creating this different, more rigorous level is what does that, it's not something you just start in fifth and sixth year. We really have had to look at what do we do in first year, what do we do in second year, what do we do in third year in order to get students ready, all ready at the beginning. It's sort of like AP science, AP physics. You don't just start with AP physics. You start with the expectation further down the road that you're getting ready for this. And it's not always going to end or culminate in an advanced placement test, rather that just for having been in that level course, the way the courses are designed with specific expectations, in our case for speaking, reading, writing and listening, that you will be better off in that class because it is a more rigorous and challenging approach. And I do have to say, even with a higher expectation for behavior, deadlines, volume, all of that. So going into this, we've had to examine things and we will continue to examine things, especially when we get feedback. What do we need to do with our beginning year students to get them to this point where they would feel confident in making kind of a leap of faith from fourth year to fifth year, from a non-AP labeled course to a fifth year course with the label of advanced placement? And I, I for one have been worried about, well, are there going to be students who would be scared off by this? But I maintain that a lot of what we've done, because we get placement test information back from our students, just the University of Wisconsin schools placement tests that students can take at this point, that we've been doing a really pretty good job with rigor and, and a demanding curriculum, but this just adds an extra layer and provides, as Mrs. Ehrenberger has said, a lot more options for our students in terms of getting credit for what they've studied in high school.
Okay, thank you. Actually, you were reading my mind because my concern was, you want to increase rigor, but you don't want students to stop taking a language because they're afraid of going forward. So, and I was going to ask how this new curriculum impacts what we did in 1 through 4 years. So you addressed all of that, so I'm glad you're thinking of that. So as long as we can increase the rigor and keep as many students as possible, that's good. I was somewhat concerned, and we didn't get this ahead of time, so I couldn't study the numbers. I saw some courses only had six or seven students or eight students. Is that kind of a accidental kind of thing from year to year or is that, is that something we should be concerned about as we're moving ahead with developing new courses?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, I think one of the things that we have faced with the upper level courses is, and especially in today's budget climate, with regards to the number of students that we would need to have minimally to make a full course and allow to, in order for it to be run, is that students in the upper level courses, given the amount of choices that they have and their own knowledge and their family's knowledge, parents' knowledge of the importance of advanced placement classes, a lot of the students we see in fifth and sixth year are already taking two, three other advanced placement courses. So they are forced with making, and these are also singletons that are offered one time during the day. So the difficulty for them to squeeze in another advanced placement class or another upper level class is hard. It puts them in a, in a difficult position. Some students are ready to juggle that and others worry about, you know, how am I going to do with this? What is it going to do to my grade point average? So ultimately, we do see lower numbers in fifth and sixth year and we end up in, in the case of German and French and Latin, having combined classes. So it's not that the courses would run with just eight students in there, at least, not to my knowledge.
Would like that, right?
Oh man, we really would. We do end up having to combine things. We are often, as a teacher then, looking at, well, what have these juniors had or not had that the seniors have or have not had? And ultimately, what, in the two-year cycle, is designed so that the students don't repeat information and so it's a rotating curriculum.
And my final question is about technology. So we've talked a lot about e-textbooks and stuff, but I don't see any proposals for e-textbooks here. Are there not really, is this not, are, are these not the kind of courses where we can make that jump to save some money and go to e-texts or is that?
I looked into that and, because these students wouldn't have, we wouldn't be giving them the technology, but we know a lot of our students have that kind of support at home anyway. There are, with some of these texts, in fact, I, the only one I'm maybe not sure about is German right now, that we can, for an extra like $10, you can get the hard copy and have online access to the text. So students wouldn't have to be carrying the book back and forth. And so we can, we could get like a class set of hard copy and for $10 more be able to have the online access. So that is actually, that is not calculated into the expense that you're seeing there. Once we saw what our numbers were and where we were at, it would be like, it would be, it would not be a lot of extra money for us to be able to do that.
For some texts, you told us earlier in other meetings that it was two-thirds the cost. It was less to have, just go to e-text. Is that not?
No, that's not. For this particular book, their exact, price is exactly the same.
Okay.
Yeah. For all of these, with the exception, I don't know if German, if you looked at ebook, but I know for French and Spanish, it's exactly the same.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other board member questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this report? I anticipate we'll see you back here at the next meeting with a proposal. Thank you to all the staff members who are here tonight, both for coming tonight and for all your work leading up to this. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. The first subitem is the technology report and Mr. Price is here.
Hello?
Good evening.
Okay. I am here. Are we good?
Yes.
I'm here to get my quarterly slash semi-annual technology update for April 2011. I just want to give you an update on, on projects that we're undertaking at the moment and one in particular that's going to be launched tomorrow or deployed tomorrow. Video surveillance, as you know, a little while ago, we came to the Board with a video IP surveillance project proposal that was funded 50% by the federal government through the COPS grant. All the hardware has been delivered for that project and it's at the locations. Several schools have been completed and they are recording, although nobody's accessing them yet because we haven't yet finalized the policies and the, the access controls. And that project is on track for completion in June 30th, 2011. Mobility initiative, which is a reference to the iPad deployment that we spoke about a little while ago. 1,000 iPads, they were delivered and they are under lock and key right now. Policy creation is underway. By policy creation, I'm referring to things like, what do we do if there's damage? What do we require of students in terms of an acceptable use agreement, et cetera? We have a committee working on those and we're, I'd say about 75% of the way to completion. Accessories have been researched and some of them have been acquired. So even though we got the 1,000 iPads, we still need to get some cases and some basic things like screen protectors, et cetera. Management tool selection is underway. That's a centralized management tool so that we can positively control and monitor the 1,000 iPads in the district so that if we need to update an application, we can do it from a central location and the students don't have to keep going to the library, et cetera, to update. The committee's working on a base identification of a base number of applications that they want on the iPads. Virtual Windows desktops have been proved. So a little while ago, we created an infrastructure that has a lot of virtualization in it. We have virtual servers in the environment. We have virtual thin clients running in every elementary school. The product that we used released an iPad application a little while ago that actually allows you to run a full-blown Windows desktop on an iPad. And there's been a few of them in the past, but this one is extremely good and it's very fast, very responsive. So we're, we're pretty excited about that actually because students, there's still some limitation for students with, with iPads because they, they don't have the full-blown set of Windows applications. And if they're ever needed, we can now enable that virtually through the iPad for them. And professional development for the teachers that are involved in this initiative is planned for May of 2011. I'm actually talking to the Apple Professional Services team tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow at 10 o'clock about this. E-reader initiatives, e-readers as opposed to the tablets, e-readers are just the, the books, electronic books or electronic devices that hold digital books. Primarily Kindles and Nooks are the main players in the field. Both myself and, or Technology Services Department and the Student Learning Department have been working with the LMSs and the soon-to-be Elementary Library Media Coordinator. We've identified the devices that we want to get. We've identified the amount that we want to get. We just have a, a challenge right now to find suitable cases for these devices. Some of the high schools did pilot e-readers, but unlike iPads, they're not as sturdy. They're not really designed for, not that iPads are, but they're, they're less designed for being carried around in the student's backpack and the cases that are on the market for them, they're, they're consumer cases. They're not rugged, they're not, they're not really suitable for student use at this point in time. So we're on the doorstep of making that investment, but we're not going to do it until we have suitable cases identified that can, you know, withstand the rigor of, of student use. And if we can't, if we can't find the cases, we won't move ahead. We won't waste our money on that. Library digital services, catalog sharing was implemented amongst the secondary schools. That means that they can now electronically look at each other's catalogs and, and make requests between the schools, et cetera. We'll be pushing that out even further at the, at the user level, at the student level so that the, the students can look at book catalogs as a whole across the district. We haven't done that at the elementary schools yet, but we will be. There's just, because of the organizational changes that are occurring, there's some more planning that needs to be done for that, but that will be in place by 2011, 12. Online digital services have also been acquired this year. We used some common school funds to invest in a product called Overdrive. Overdrive has, or provides, and actually, a lot of public libraries have it. I'm not sure, but I think the Wauwatoa Public Library has it. They provide digital books, both in print or, or digital text and, and also audio books and Adobe ebooks, et cetera. We use some common school funds. We invest in that across the district. It integrates very well with PCs and also iPads. There's an iPad app for it. So students will be able to select books that are in that catalog and load them onto their PCs at home, load them onto their iPads, load them onto the PCs in the district, listen to them, read them, you know, whatever, whatever's appropriate. We estimate the rollout for that to be in the next month or so. I'm actually, we're setting up some initial kickoff meetings for that with the vendor, hopefully this week. Apple Macintosh, I threw this in here because, you know, Macs really didn't have a presence in the district over the last few years, but their presence is increasing. We've got some machines that are being dropped out at the secondary schools and they're going to be utilized as video solutions. They were video studios. They're actually delivered today. They'll also double as the iPad sync stations. The advantage to using Macintosh for iPad sync is that you can do 20 at a time instead of one at a time like you can on Windows machines. Not that we expect them to be used as iPad sync stations very much. Most of that's going to come from the centralized control management utilities, but if a student, if a student accidentally wipes their iPad or if it needs to be erased or something, those stations will be available for that. Their primary use though, is as video editing studios for those schools. There'll also be Macs in each elementary school and I'm going to touch on that in the next slide, I believe. And we also had Macs throughout the district that were purchased by rogue agents, teachers that wanted Macs, but they weren't necessarily supported by the district. Since we've gone through the transition that we went through over the last couple of years, we now have that fluidity. We now have much more flexibility. You know, our, our content access control has been loosened, but we still managed to keep control, but we can, we can, we, it's, it's much easier to let people on the network and not have to worry too much about any issues that they may introduce. So much to their delight, we've managed to network them and get them connected to the internet, et cetera. And the art department in particular likes that. EFW grant, Technology Services was lucky enough to be the recipients of the EFW grant. The F W grant was entitled Bringing Multimedia to the Classroom. It involves a mobile video studio for each elementary school. So basically, they'll have a high-definition camcorder, a digital camera, some books for professional development with regard to digital storytelling. They'll have a Macintosh MacBook Pro, an Apple MacBook Pro and it'll all be contained in a nice little self-contained unit bag that the studi, the schools can then use to record and film anything they want really, field trips, school events, anything that they choose to do. Technology Services Department will be behind them all the way. We will offer training. We're creating online web presence for each location and we're integrating that web presence probably with some of the more popular social networking sites so that We will offer training, we're creating online web presence for each location, and we're integrating that web presence probably with some of the more popular social networking sites so that parents will be able to see these videos, the community at large will have a greater involvement in seeing what's going on in the schools. Professional development is planned and, like I said, online presence is underway. And the final one is Google Apps for Students. Google Apps for Students will be released tomorrow. It'll be an icon on their desktop and every student, in the secondary schools at least, will have a student email account. Now, when we published this, we did send a letter out to parents and we gave parents the ability to opt out if they did not want their children or their students to have a district email account because they don't just email each other, they can also email people outside of the district. The educational value of that is so great, though, that we could not deny it en masse. We felt that it was important to give that to the students. For example, during election campaigns, they're emailing, they're emailing candidates. There are a lot of initiatives, Project Lead the Way, for example, is one, that involve community members. So restricting email to just within the district really did not have any, actually, it had some educational disadvantage to it. However, realizing that it's a somewhat volatile application to put into students' hands, we did give the parents, we sent home a notification to every parent and gave them the option to opt out. A few of them chose to do so and those students will not be receiving email accounts, however, they will receive all the other Google Apps services, which include online file creation and sharing. So the students will be able to basically use standard web browsers to create their documents, share them with other people, share them with their teachers, and basically access them from anywhere at any time. There's also a high level of mobile device integration. You can use your phone and I can get to Google Docs on my phone. iPads, of course, there is an application that we will be investing into that has very, very effective Google Apps integration. Now, this is available for students. They have their own domain called tosa sd.com as opposed to the regular Wauwatosa School District domain, wauwatosa.k12.wi.us. There are a number of reasons for that. The tosa sd.com domain, if we ever should need to disable this for students, which I really don't think we'll ever get to that point, but if we need to, it's easier to sever a domain than it is to separate it out from the full district domain. And also, it gives them a sense of identity as well. We'll be heading, as we move forward, we're looking to really build out the support team for the tosa sd.com domain, build out some websites, and we'll have it really be a student-run environment and allow them to become a little bit more self-sufficient in that area, also to develop in that area, and then for those that really want to get involved in it, there are opportunities for experience references, et cetera, as they move on. With that being said, we also have a staff solution available for Google Apps because we may, we're going to investigate the feasibility of moving to that platform internally as well, moving our email across there and file storage, et cetera. Now, that's available and has been developed for staff and it is available right now, but we're not mandating that the staff need to. We've had about 60 staff members that have jumped on board and are very keen to get into it and have done, and I expect there to be more soon. Now, with that being said, this is what I call the aha moment or the sixth sense moment. This presentation is actually on Google Docs, so it'll give you a bit of an idea as to what the students can do. I walked up to this laptop, I didn't plug in, I didn't have a presentation to plug in there, all I needed was connection to the Internet, and I just started my presentation here. You can see, basically, really, all it is is a website and you can store documents up there, you can create new ones, documents, presentations, spreadsheets, drawings, et cetera. You can go in and edit your documents. Now, this isn't as robust as, say, for example, the full-blown Microsoft Office Suite, but you saw the presentation then, for 95 percent of the work that people do, this is more than adequate. The nice thing is, it's shareable as well. So if I was to work on a document, I could share it with other people within this domain and we could update it live if we wanted to, or asynchronously, synchronously, et cetera. But you can see that there's really quite a lot of, you know, you can put images in there, videos, et cetera. There really is quite a lot of functionality in there. And as we move forward, this is where we really see a lot of student work occurring with mobile devices, Google Apps, or some other service if we ever move to another service later on down the track. But really, this is where, when I was talking about the cloud a few months ago, this is it. And that's it. So any questions?
Board members, Mr. Meyer.
Is the staff solution usable by the board for the board documents?
If you sign over your firstborn child, then yes. Yes, no, no.
I was going to offer you my, but I don't think you'd take my, but anyway.
Yeah, we can make, we can make those available to the board.
I'm just thinking about distribution of the agenda and attachments for, you know...
The staff solution that we have in place is, you know, there's still some polish that we need to do and, you know, there'll be some more training materials that'll be created and put up there for staff members because, believe it or not, kids actually get into this without the need for a lot of guidance, but staff members, we need to, it's a cultural change for them, so we need to help them. But if you want access to it now, absolutely, yeah. I mean, you have, you have district email accounts, so there's no reason why you couldn't have that.
Well, I mean, in a coordinated capacity, I know we had discussed earlier at an in-service of some electronic capability for making the various attachments we get for, or distribution documents for various board meetings, if there was some file store capability, which looks like there is. You know, is there a way to leverage it to make a board document library, agenda history?
Absolutely. As long as it doesn't violate any of the, you know, open meetings laws or anything like that. I'd have to check probably with Mr. Chain.
Well, I don't mean for putting comment out there from the board, I mean for things that are pushed out to the board so that we could access attachments using mobile devices, you know, like the agenda documents for tonight's meeting.
Yep.
You know, we had to go to the group wise and log in and, you know, all that kind of stuff. It seems this would be a little more fluid, more friendly.
It is.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
Absolutely, that's, that's why we're doing it.
I'd be real interested in it.
That's why I'm hoping in another year or two that we get rid of group wise, that we've moved to this.
Yeah, so I mean, not for board members to start a discussion there, I mean for the staff to push documents to us.
Yep.
So that we have a more mobile capability for viewing them. Okay.
Staff member could post the document up there and they could easily just click on share and we could create a group called Board and they just share it with the board and it shows up in your document storage.
Well, excuse me, actually doing that, one of the benefits is, for example, this meeting where we had changes on the agenda after it was sent out the first time, we could just go on and change the agenda on Google Docs and it's updated for everybody and wouldn't have to keep sending it out and printing off different copies and things like that, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Meyer?
No, that's all, thank you.
Neil Field?
Thank you, Jamie. My thought when I first read this is how do we protect information, especially student-type information? Say, for example, if they're working on a project, they might inadvertently share some personal information out on the site and how is the information protected?
There is, there are administrative tools where we can run reports to see what's shared and with who. So we intend to run those on a regular basis just to make sure that nothing gets too out of control. Education is a big thing as well, making sure that the students are aware. And we've created a lot of training materials and flyers, et cetera, that we've integrated into the Google Apps environment to make sure that they're aware. We're also educating the teachers, the library media specialists, et cetera, to make sure that they know that. With that being said, there are limitations. If it becomes a problem, we can turn it off. They can still use Google Docs, but they can't share the documents publicly. At the moment, we're allowing them to share them publicly because of the educational need. As far as some of the other features that are in there, they're not able to. So do we run that risk? Yes, a little bit, but we do anyway because students have access to, some of them are accessing their own email accounts now and they're sharing those files and sending those files out to themselves, they're emailing them home or wherever they need to. So it's really an education and responsible use. There is no matter, there is no hard and fast tool that will safeguard against that because we are giving them the ability to share publicly. It's much like content filtering, you know? If you have very hard restrictions, then you're protecting the district from them ever accessing anything inappropriate, but at the same time, from an educational perspective, they're going to suffer. So you have to find that happy medium between the two, and that comes from education, which we will be undertaking with them and bigger.
Mr. Carter?
Hi, Jamie. As you were talking about Google Apps, I was thinking of Blackboard for some reason.
Yep.
And I use Blackboard to communicate with students where I can send group emails to classes and things. So will Google emails be part of Blackboard then, or is Blackboard going in or out of use or how will that interface?
When we set up Blackboard, I laid claim to the tosa sd.com domain probably 18 months ago with a view to implementing student email somewhere later on down the track. At that point, I didn't know that it would be Google Apps, we just knew that we wanted students to have email. So when we imported all the student accounts into Blackboard, we automatically set their email addresses on there as their username at tosa sd.com, knowing that further on down the track, they would be valid addresses. So would they communicate that way? Absolutely. If you, if you're a teacher that's running a Blackboard class, and I think it's important to take, to step to the side here and point out that this, Google Apps is not a replacement for Blackboard, it's not a content management system, it's file storage, but it works in conjunction with Blackboard. So if a teacher creates a class, all they have to do is just, basically, there's a link in Blackboard that says email the class. They can send an email out, it'll come to their tosa sd.com account. If it's an assignment, the student can create the assignment in there, and if it's acceptable to the teacher, instead of actually downloading the assignment and submitting it, they could just send the link to the document back to the teacher if they wanted to.
So from a policy perspective, is there a way that we can go back to parents and opt it out to encourage, you know, every student should have a Google email address so they can, so the teacher can send group emails to the whole class?
We're working on that. Actually, out of the 3,864 students that we loaded into the system, there were only 10 that had opted out. And there wasn't 10 families, it was only about six families, so. But we are looking at that and working on that. And that's why they will still have access to everything else, it's just the email abortion that they won't have access to.
And I had a question about the mobility initiative, and Mrs. Ehrenberger might be better to answer this. We talked about professional development and policy development. One thing that wasn't mentioned that I'm hoping that we're doing, will we be developing a monitoring system to monitor the curriculum that's developed for using the iPad and how they're actually used next year in the classroom?
Yeah, we, actually, part of that professional development includes that. We'll be looking at a variety of areas. One that teachers have been quite excited about is measuring the level of organizational skills for students and how that's going to, how it's going to be improved, how it's intended to be improved by having access to the iPads. And also part of those professional services, and that's part of the call that I have with the Apple team this week, is that they do that. They come in and they take those baselines beforehand and then give you the measurement tools so that as you, as you move throughout the year, you can come back and report to say, you know, from an educational perspective, from a true educational perspective, this is the sort of effect that...
But I was more concerned, more basal level, where we, you know, we have 25 classes that are now using them and maybe, how will we know? Six teachers, you know, we thought did an outstanding job and made maximum use of them, majority of teachers began to use them and are learning, but there were a group of teachers that actually didn't use them and, you know, they didn't warrant much benefit to the class. Do we have a program where the administrators and teachers are interacting so we know how effective they're used?
Oh, absolutely. Those teachers are a pretty cohesive team, actually. We've got a total of 18 teachers and we've met a couple of times now. A lot of, a lot of our work is done virtually through Google Apps, actually, but we meet as a group and, you know, that was part of the reason why the, while the quotation marks trailblazers were chosen last year was so that we didn't have to push them hard this year or next year when they received those devices. We could enter this initiative with confidence that they would maintain the momentum throughout the year. Now, with that being said, in some of the schools, that mobility initiative is undertaken at a house level. So in that house, you might have one or two teachers that aren't, they're very keen and they want to, but they're not maybe as naturally technically inclined as some of the other teachers. But everybody entered this agreement or entered this initiative with the full awareness that it was going to be a team effort, that those teachers that are the trailblazers will be supporting and helping those that are not. And it's something that I will be monitoring in student learning as well throughout the year. I mean, we want this to be a success. It's not just something we're going to start and let fall by the wayside.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Randall?
What levels are getting the email? Is it high school?
Second, middle school and high school.
Middle and high school, okay. I'm really glad to hear that. I know that's been an issue for a long time and, just quickly, how did we, how did you convince people to allow that? It was controversial and, you know...
It's probably, it's still controversial, but really, it got to the point where we had to loosen the restrictions on the content filtering so kids could get to their own email accounts to do what they needed to do from an educational perspective. And what we did, what that did was then created a case of haves and have-nots. So there are a lot of students that maybe had their own Gmail accounts because their parents let them have them or their own Roadrunner accounts or whatever it was, but there are a lot of students that didn't, you know, and you're creating this disparate environment then. So really, it was that that drove it, you know, and the evolution of Blackboard as well. We had a lot of classes, we've got a lot of classes out there now where teachers will send an email to their class, but only 30, 40 percent of the class actually receives it because only 30 or 40 percent of them have email addresses. So it was just a natural progression. We have to, we have to do it. You know, and the nice thing about Google Apps is that if it does get out of control, which I don't think it will, but if it does become a problem, we can restrict it so that they can only email Wauwatosa teachers and backwards. We can completely eliminate contact with the outside world, so to speak, but we don't want to go that route out of the gate.
No, I'm really glad we've given them that opportunity and responsibility. I mean, I know we would get calls from kids on the newspaper staff that wanted information and you'd have to call them at a certain time because you couldn't contact or email or whatever, and so I'm glad to hear that.
Board members, anything further?
Well, I have a question, which is actually for Dr. Erdl. We've heard Mr. Price talk about how you're reviewing policies, but I don't think we, as a board, have reviewed how all these new programs interact with our policies. Is that a part of what you're looking at as these new programs go into effect and are there policies, district policies, that the board needs to look at whether there be new or amended to make sure that we're covering any issues that might arise with these new programs that are going into effect?
Actually, yes, to the question, have we looked at them? We have. I don't, at this point, anticipate any policies that need to be changed, any board policies, but as the work that Mr. Price is talking about with his committee that he continues to go through, when they complete that, we'll do a full review through board policy to see which ones do need to be amended and bring them forward to the board.
Okay, thank you.
I think the terminology I use might throw people off a bit, too. I generalize the term "policy" without realizing that it's a much more stricter term here.
I assumed you were talking about administrative guidelines.
Really, what I'm referring to is more guidelines that apply to the policies that are already in place.
I appreciate that, but we do need to keep in mind as we roll out new programs that we might need to revisit our board policies as well as your reviewing your guidelines. So we just have to keep that in mind as we move forward. So thank you very much for your report. Yes, Mr. Carter?
Another question. As you write these guidelines, will the board be involved in that? I mean, there are some monetary decisions here on reimbursement for broken products and things like that. Is the board going to have a chance to comment on...
Yeah, I'll bring a presentation to the board to let you know, as far as the iPad initiative or the mobility initiative. Yeah, I can... I mean, there's no secrets there.
No, I don't mean it's secret, but I mean, there are... I think there are some decisions to be made that impact the community, you know? If one way to go forward is that the students have to buy a new iPad if they break one, you know, that's something we would have to think about because families might not be able... Most likely wouldn't be able to afford that. So I'm thinking of more of a global kind of look at how those are going to be developed and how they're going to impact the students and the families.
I think that's probably a discussion I'd have to have with Dr. Erdl as to what would be appropriate to bring to the board for a board decision and what would be more a district decision, but whatever's appropriate will come to the board.
Thanks.
Is there any community comment on this report? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our next item is an update on the Montessori program. I believe Mr. Chanon will begin, at least begin, that portion of the evening.
Actually, the real update is across the hall. As you walked in, I noticed that there's no classrooms yet, but there is construction. We're getting there. At this point, this is a brief update regarding kind of the classes as they're shaping up and as we're finalizing plans for what will become the Montessori school. As you know, we had high interest at each grade, each set of grade levels, and I guess I'll start by reminding you what our Montessori terminology is. Our children's house classroom, which is junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten, our lower elementary, which is first and second grade, and our upper elementary, which is third, fourth, and fifth grade. When we initially met, we made the decision to offer enrollments if we had at least twenty interested students at a classroom, as we defined it there, multi-age classrooms. At this point, we have twenty-three students enrolled in our children's house program with a waitlist of forty-four. And so the target class size that we're looking for there is twenty-six. And a little bit further, my discussion will talk about a possible modification that we're currently considering. Lower elementary, our class enrollment is currently at twenty-two with three offers outstanding and a waitlist of ten. So again, we anticipate hitting the target of approximately twenty-six students in lower elementary. Our upper elementary currently stands at fifteen students with three offers outstanding. So we're hoping that that final enrollment will be eighteen, and there's no further waitlist at the upper elementary level. Although, total enrollment in the school, we think is going to hit the minimum of sixty students on average for average class sizes, although our upper elementary school will be a little below twenty with final enrollment. One other consideration that we've... We are currently discussing administratively is that the junior kindergarten is a half-day program. The senior kindergarten is an all-day program, and that does create a drop-off in the total number of students we'd be serving by that one children's house teacher. And whether or not we want to open up an additional thirteen seats of junior kindergarten students who would only attend in the afternoon. One of the things that we're balancing here is being able to make this opportunity as available as possible, given the high level of interest, but on the flip side, making sure that we're very... Have a great deal of fidelity to a Montessori model. As Dean and I and Dr. Erdl have discussed that, we think that's something that we can deliver in terms of having students who are engaged in that afternoon program. Admittedly, with some of the senior kindergartners spending some of their time in specials and the junior kindergartners getting more individualized attention, we think that would actually not be a bad process. So we're looking at possibly opening up additional junior kindergarten seats in the afternoon to meet the high demand. And that's the current status of our various classroom enrollments for our Montessori school.
Dr. Erdl, anything further?
No, I was kind of joking about the renovations, but they are proceeding extensively with the two classrooms directly across the hall here and the third, which was on the far south end of the building. Also, another additional space, which is right directly behind this wall, that's just going to be an open space for use as well, not necessarily for a classroom right away, but whether it's a recreational space or just an open space that's outside of the classroom, which also, if we continue using this room as a boardroom, would be an opportunity to expand with a movable wall that could be used for larger audiences when needed. But the renovations, I don't think they've run into any significant snags, other than the men's bathroom not working real well this evening, but other than that, the renovations are moving along well.
Mrs. Weber?
May we have a printout of the numbers that you presented to us tonight so we can keep track of them?
Yes, I can send that around.
There are... I think you know there's been some interest from those people who are on waitlists that are anxious to... Does that mean that there possibly could be some more numbers accepted if we add that other class?
If we added that class, there's currently a forty-four-person junior kindergarten list, and we would anticipating taking thirteen or fourteen of those.
That's junior K?
Yes. And into an afternoon program. The ten students at lower elementary, as I said, there's three... Three offers outstanding, and once we get responses from those, we'll probably... If there are no responses, we would be taking some additional students off of that waitlist as well.
You use that terminology. Is that parents that who have not decided yet, they're still in the decision-making whether they're going to take part in the Montessori program?
The students who have offers, yes. It would mean that they may have been on the waiting list, and if there was someone who turned it down, they would have been extended an offer, and so then they have a certain amount of time to respond. And then if we can't really take someone off the waiting list till we've heard back or the time expired for the offer.
Mrs. Randall?
The JK, SK, you said there's currently twenty-three?
Yes.
Accepted? And forty-four, and all forty-four of those are JK?
Correct. We've accepted everyone who was in senior kindergarten. There's no senior kindergarten waitlist anymore.
And how many of the twenty-three are SK?
Eleven. So currently, there's twelve junior kindergartners enrolled and eleven senior kindergartners. So...
And then in the traditional Montessori, those JK students would normally be there all day in a daycare-type environment?
Potentially. Every Montessori school is different. The Montessori, I guess, focused program itself outside of daycare can very often take place in just that three-hour work cycle and then the students not being there the rest of the day. In other school districts where they purchase into, where their four K enrollment is a Montessori provider, they're generally purchasing half-day blocks. So, for example, Wauatosa Montessori, the Wauatosa School District uses them as a provider and provides half-day JK, and then parents are paying to stay in a daycare model. But because we offer a half-day junior kindergarten, allows us to theoretically run two junior kindergartners, they still get a multi-age experience because the senior kindergartners are there all day. Obviously, it won't be exactly the same experience because for part of that time, senior kindergartners will get specials, although the amount of time that senior kindergartners spend in specials is not that extensive, so...
So in the traditional ones where the JKs do stay all day, they are then separate from the senior kindergarten in the afternoon generally?
There's a lot of variability on that.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of ways in which Montessori schools frame that. I mean, they call it extended day. Sometimes they participate together, sometimes they're separate. It really is a really wide variety. Obviously, in some of those other ones, you also have three-year-olds within that program. They have built-in nap times, things that I guess aren't a consideration when you don't have students that young.
And then you said the lower elementary, which is one and two, you've got twenty-three or, excuse me, twenty-two, three outstanding there also?
Correct. And then we have a limited waitlist, so we would anticipate we'll have a twenty-six at the end.
Then the three to five, is that a typical Montessori grouping?
Third grade can end up in both lower and upper elementary. It kind of is a transition year. The difficulty that we have when you have a startup school is where do you put students when you haven't been working with them for three years? Obviously, part of this is driven by class size determination and also the fact that the majority of our grouping is going to be third graders. So we think it's an appropriate age grouping.
And you said there's fifteen in that level?
There are currently fifteen.
And how does that break down?
Breaks up eight third graders, four fourth graders, three fifth graders.
I guess I would just say to make the best use of our facilities and to draw in the most students, particularly resident students, that if the resources for this three-to-five group are taking away from getting in, getting some of those younger kids in, that maybe you consider, you know, just going through second grade. And I can tell, and I've talked to you about this on the phone, too, and one question leads to another, to another, to another. But to me, you know, I... And maybe I'm wrong, and the numbers that were sent out, too, when we did parent surveys and so on, it really did seem that the majority of the interest was at the very youngest level. So, again, if this three-to-five resources, you know, with the rooms or the time or the staffing, aren't worth it when we have that long of a waitlist for the younger kids?
Yeah, there's multiple considerations here, one of which is that we don't want to just accept a classroom of purely JK students. And so to simply accept them without some balancing senior kindergartner makes it not a multi-age experience. And so by running the two JKs throughout the day with the senior kindergartner, we can create a multi-agent environment for those students and also plan for the long-term growth. The other challenging aspect of the upper elementary school is that we do need a place for our second graders to grow into. And so, you know, we think it's worth the investment of resources to create that pool of students so that we can have a sustainable growth model over the next few years. But I definitely understand that point about extending, and that's obviously why we've made some different considerations for expanding the JK opportunity. But at some point, it would no longer be a multi-age Montessori experience to simply just open up junior kindergartens.
And then just one last quick question. How many total of these students currently attend the district schools?
I have an answer in the floor.
You don't have the answers for the JKs.
Yeah, obviously excluding junior kindergarten, there are twelve of those students who are currently not attending our schools. And then there are siblings to those students in junior kindergarten. And, you know, you could do some speculation as to whether or not they would have come to our junior kindergartners, not or not, but we just speculate. There are twelve students in senior kindergarten through fourth grade who are not attending our... Currently not enrolled in our school system who are resident students.
And since this is part of our school district, not a charter, is this available to open enrollment students?
It theoretically could be. The discussions we've had in terms of our current enrollments is that we would not be adding open enrollment seats there, but yes, as years go by, yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Carter?
When this was proposed to us, we got a worksheet that had potential payoffs for different kinds of students that were enrolled, whether they're resident or not residents of the district. When you send us the student numbers, could you send us an analysis of how that numbers work out financially?
Yes.
As far as residents versus non-residents and how that turns out? I might not be understanding the numbers correctly, but when you talk about adding another section of junior kindergarten students, if you did that and you ended up with, say, twenty-five JK students this year, that means you're going to have twenty-five senior kindergarten students next year. And if you add any more JK students, you're going to have a bigger class size than you targeted. So how is that going to work?
You know, there would have to be a fourth room. And part of the discussion, why we're discussing this right now, is that we do need to plan for the use of this building and a five-year plan. So part of our discussions that Dean and I and Dr. Erdl have been having is how do we project out of the growth of the school over the next three to five years? Will it be strictly a three-classroom? I would anticipate that if we add this second junior kindergarten, then we're really committing to having two children houses next year as that junior kindergarten rolls up, having one lower elementary, one upper elementary in year two, so four classrooms. And that's part of our discussions to whether or not we believe that's sustainable within this building because that may eventually roll up to six classrooms within five years.
I hope you bring that discussion back here because you've mentioned three classrooms for five years or for long... For three classes for the long term several times.
Yes.
And also financially, doesn't... I haven't looked at the numbers, but with only twelve new students and several hundred, four hundred thousand dollars of cost for renovation plus teachers' costs, adding another classroom is going to make it even less financially beneficial to the district, if it's even financially beneficial now, but we'll have to wait and see what the numbers are. So I would... Obviously, you are thinking carefully, but I would encourage you to think carefully before you add another JK section.
Yes, and is definitely part of very many long conversations.
Mrs. Weber?
I really want to thank you for your report. As we go into this, and it seems like it's been a short time, there's definitely a strong interest in Wauatosa for a Montessori school, and that really is exciting for one person to see. Well, thank you. Well, thank you.
Any further board member question or comment? Is there any community comment on this report? Thank you very much. The last segment of the superintendent's report is our budget update. Dr. Earl?
Thank you. The development of the budget is an ongoing process that we've been administratively been discussing each and every day and trying to come to, to meet our first and most important goal, and that's to present a balanced budget to the school board for consideration and approval by June 30th. And really, we need to have things pretty close to being wrapped up by the beginning of June. And I think the timeline that we're running against is real challenging right now in what we're trying to accomplish when we look at what's being proposed by the state. And that's really what we're operating off of. With the proposal of the 5 and 1/2 percent reduction in our revenue limit, when we talked last meeting, roughly $6.5 million is kind of our starting point where we're working off of and working backward. And I think just for the context of what that kind of money looks like in direct relationship to work in a building, if we were to add 10 students to every single secondary classroom in class, the savings would be less than $5 million. So, you can see the extent that if we don't have more creative solutions than just cutting teachers, administrators, and different positions, that the impact would be significant. If we're running a class of 25 in an AP class, you can jump it up to 35, and we're still short $1.5 million. So, I just, I think that's an important context to look at. What we have been doing is administratively having many discussions with each of our four associations. The Teachers Association Administrative Assistance, Local 1561, which is our custodians, and our support personnel or educational assistance. And each of our groups are in different situations with their contract status. The teacher's contract is up at the end of June. 1561 and our Administrative Assistance, both those contracts run through June of 2013. One thing I can say that we will not be recommending is contract extensions for any of our groups. And we're having these discussions and looking at concessions and trying to limit the impact of these aid reductions on the classroom. All of the groups have been willing to have those discussions. And I think we've, they understand that where we're at with our budget process. And really, what we're trying to get to is where every employee in the district is, has a pay freeze. We're looking at different health insurance plans and looking at the WRS piece that is in limbo with Act 10. I think another one of our goals is looking that we don't, we want to make sure that we're flexible enough where we can act regardless of what happens with the court ruling on Act 10. If it goes into effect or does not go into effect, we're prepared one way or the other. But our driving force is the proposed budget. And while that may change somewhat, I think it's, like I said, with the timeline that we're working against, we have to assume many different things. For example, we have to make assumptions on the number of students we'll have on the third Friday of September next year. And for each student, it's a difference of roughly $10,000 to $11,000 in revenue. So, a lot of the budget building is based on assumptions and the best knowledge we have at this point. So, I think it's important to point out that we will have a balanced budget to bring to the board for consideration. And we will have, continue our discussions and get to the point where we need to, where we can limit the impact on the classroom and continue operations for our school district. It's challenging, but I believe we'll be able to. Now, I believe we will bring a balanced budget proposal forward to the board for consideration. And with that timeline being toward the middle to end of June for approval, there'll be conversations prior to that that will take place at the board level.
Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Carter?
Ooh, clarification. Just your last statement, where you said there'd be conversations at the board level prior to that. When will you be bringing us something more substantive to discuss?
We haven't planned that. I think that it's going to have to be a discussion with the board president and the development of the next several agendas. We've had budget updates on each and every agenda. But certainly, as soon as we possibly can, if there's board action that's required, we're going to bring it forward for discussion and action.
My concern is, in the past, you know, we've received the budget, the first meeting in June and approved it in the second meeting in June, with very little time for the board to modify or discuss it. And that hasn't been such a problem in the past with finances the way they were because we were able to fund anything, everything. But if we're looking at program cuts of any kind, I think we need to have more public discussion about that ahead of time so the board and the public can discuss, you know, if there are going to be program cuts, you know, what the board priority on those is going to be. I know you'll have your recommendations, but we can't, it's going to be really uncomfortable for us to have those recommendations come at the first meeting of June and then have to vote on it at the next meeting. It just simply won't be timed to have adequate discussion. So, at the next meeting or two, will we see an outline of what the budget is going to look like so we can discuss budget priorities? Or can you assure us that there won't be program cuts at this point?
How do you define program?
How do I define program? Reduction of sporting program, reduction of music or arts programs, increase in class sizes, things like that?
Okay, I think there's a couple of different things. I mean, I guess we have to look at recommendations and what we're looking at for board approval. Certainly, there's going to be, it's going to be brought forward. I can't give a timeline on it. I mean, that's going to have to be a discussion. Like I said, we continue in development of the budget, and the scenarios change each and every day. But as soon as we possibly can, we, like I said, the discussions that are taking place with our employee groups is the most important piece. Because to, we're not looking to cut art. We're not looking to cut music. We're looking to generate the savings through concessions from employees is the major part of it.
So, will those concessions cover the $6.5 million then?
Not entirely, I don't believe.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
I've been giving this a lot of thought in the past few days, and I've begun to reach the belief that a pay freeze is not adequate as an approach. And hearing tonight that even with a pay freeze, we have a gap in trying to reach our goal, our financial goal. So, I don't, I think there has to be some rational basis for compensating employees. And at some point, a pay freeze stops being rational. And also, I don't think next year is going to be any better than this year. And therefore, you know, to implement a pay freeze postpones whatever decisions we have to make for a year. And that, to my thinking, means we lose a year in making progress. So, more discussion will have to be had. But I just need to put that out there tonight that the pay freeze concept, it doesn't look like it will be adequate financially, and it doesn't look to me like it moves us in furtherance of our goals and objectives.
Any further board question or comment? Is there any community comment on this agenda item? All right, that brings us to our final opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone present who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, please again approach the microphone and state your name and address. There being none, we will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to WISSTAT Sections 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to discuss the status of negotiations with collective bargaining units. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Oh, move.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mrs. Galanti, would you call the roll?
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Speed?
Yes.
We will reconvene in approximately five to 10 minutes. I know there are a lot of students present. If you need your documents signed, please feel free to come.